Good evening. At this time, if you would please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the entrance, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time when you make sure that you give it to our city clerk. I will call to order tonight, City Council, and City Council is a successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace for October 9th, 2018. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Timothy Isom of the Faithway Fellowship Church of the Nazarene. And immediately following that, our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Frank Tetley. If you would please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this time. Thank you that we can pause for a moment to be able to give our care and concerns to you. Father, we just ask that you continue to be with our mayor and each of the City Council members and each of the staff in the city. We also lift up our sheriff's department, fire department, Lord, and we just ask that you guide them and protect them and that you would keep them safe as they keep us safe. Father, we just ask that you be with each and every citizen within this great city and that you would just continue to bless. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you Pastor Isom. Thank you Mr. Tetley. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Robles.
Present.
Mayor McNabbou.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We don't have a special presentation tonight, but I did want to announce that tonight we will close in honor, actually in memory, of resident and community volunteer Michael Mickey Boobier. We will also be closing in honor of Jade Maldonado, who was a relative of the Mayor Pro Tem, and she was the young woman that was the crossing guard in Riverside, who was working at Pacific High School and was...
She was a child.
She was a child, I'm sorry. She was a crossing guard or she was...
No, she was the victim.
Oh, okay. She was a victim of a hit and run. I misunderstood. I thought she was a crossing guard at Pacific High School. So we will close in honor of those two people tonight in their memory. And with that, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for item removal? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask the city attorney if he had an opportunity to review the contract for vote live under item number eight.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, I have, and I made revisions to it, and they accepted them, and they were along the lines of what you had mentioned at the last meeting.
All right. What shall we do with the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, make a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNabbou voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not on our current agenda. Following restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. Items may also be agendized for later meetings. All right, we'll start with Mr. Frank Tetley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, for allowing a few brief comments about a very wonderful man no longer with us. Mickey would want it, and has Mickey lived it. I'm going to keep it short. We honor him not because he was just a nice guy, a good guy, but he was an ordinary citizen doing extraordinary service, and he would be missed by many different groups, and I think that's one of the most unique things about Mickey. He was involved in a lot of different things, some of which I have thought about. When you first met Mickey, most people think he was a probation officer, as my wife did, or a police officer. He had that demeanor about him, alpha dog, and no messing around. But I like to think of him actually more like a fried Hostess Twinkie. He was crispy on the outside, but he was a mellow, mushy sweetheart on the inside. If he was wrong, he would be the first to admit so. That's wonderful. But he also expected that same behavior of you. He could talk to you about anything in the world, it's wonderful, and if he had a subject that we need, he needed some research on, he'd actually go and research, come back, and pick up that conversation next time you saw him. I think the one thing that I believe, the one thing that Mickey could not do, is to act. You got what you saw. He couldn't put on pretense, falsehoods, he just, you know, that was it. As to the service of our group, service is our motto in the Lions Club, but that's just one of the things he did. He was one of the founding members, and other members of the committee are here today, of the Veterans Wall, very positive, profound experience. He went above and beyond. Some are lucky to have one career, if you will, or passion. He had several. He was on Citizens Brawl. He was on CERT. He was a member of the Lions, and as that, one of the main things he did was he managed the community center. He spent hundreds of hours there so that we could make, actually hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years to donate to the community. He was management, plumber, fixer, landlord, and of course, the holder of the keys. He was also our representative from the Lions Club with the Boy Scouts. His passion was cars, one of them. We had two car shows when I was president a few years back, and he ran both of them. And I think he's up there now, right now, with St. Peter, showing him a better way to manage the keys to the gate.
Thank you, Mr. Tetley.
I take no pleasure in this. Some of you may remember my little rant last council meeting, how I was called out the fascist-type tactics to shut down my watermelon giveaway and my political talking on private property. Well, apparently, the city manager wasn't listening because he was out at it again this past Sunday. He contacted the manager of the old State of Brothers with my watermelon. I have proof of that. He also, once again, contacted my, the owners of the property in my corner of Vivienda and Barton Road next to the community center. The realtor, got up, the realtor upset, who I got permission from to put my sign up, and I was forced to take it down. Actually, it was knocked down. Now, I ask, why is this, once again, this out-of-town city manager sticking his nose in our local political process? My belief is he favors the sitting mayor. This is like deja vu all over again to me, trying to eliminate my signs and suppress my freedom of political speech, just like back in 2013, when the city manager then was favoring colluding with sitting elected officials to shut down my No Measure C campaign, and you all know what that led to. City manager was hiding hundreds of thousands of dollars from we, the people. Remember the Budget Ad-Hoc Committee, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Hussey, and myself? We were all in that committee for eight meetings, and we sat there while she sat in the room with finance directors, knowing full well that there was money upstairs, and they were convincing us how poor we were. That led to the Measure C battle. So I sat there and drank the Kool-Aid, like everybody else, for about three meetings, and I had a bad feeling in my stomach. I said no, turned around, and went out, started my Measure, No Measure C campaign. So, so then the bullies sent out the code enforcement, looking for my signs with a tape measure, and taking out only my signs if they were too close to the street, not their signs. So, why do I bring this up? To me, it's a culture of corruption, of administration to administration to administration, and continues to this day, as I found out the other day, once again, the hard way. So the city manager's going down, trying to shut down my signs, not anybody else's, and yes, I have the evidence. I'm tired of staff members, for years, have been singling me out and harassing me in my projects in town, including my wannabe farm down there, costing me tens of thousands of dollars. So I'm done being harassed. I'm done being singled out by administration after administration. I am done. I'm going to the grand jury and see if I can stop this harassment and abuse of power, and all that these people are doing is proving that it's time to overhaul City Hall. So why does the city manager and staff keep pushing me down? These little pet projects you see, like, on the agenda tonight? Should it be done right away, like painting a basketball color or patriotic colors just before election? It's a great photo op, isn't it, for somebody? Or how about the 40th anniversary? Why is it set a month and a half before the actual date, just happens to fall just before the election? What a coincidence. So postpone everything on this, on this agenda tonight, and I'd like to apologize to Mickey. He was a good friend and a fellow Lion member. He, too, was rough around the edges, but he was a good person deep inside, like Lion Frank said, and, but most importantly, he was a good Lion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Our next speakers are Valerie Holmes and Nicole Littlefield.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. First off, as the Committee for the Veterans Wall of Freedom, we would like to send our condolences to Mickey's family. He was a founding member of this organization and really got it off to a great start. I would like to invite you, and we do, we have invitations to the Veterans Day celebration, which coincides with your 40th birthday. Just to let you know and let everyone else know, it usually takes place 11:11 at 11:00 a.m. This year, it will be at 3:00 p.m., which will, kind of, like I said, coincide with everything else, and finish up about the time for celebration at the very end of your birthday. So, thank you very much for allowing us to be here, and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes and Ms. Littlefield. Next, I have a, I have two requests to speak from Jeremy Rivera. And so, did you want to speak at two different items?
I can do it all in three wonderful minutes. Applause. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Happy October. We're already here, Oktoberfest. I wear my Germany shirt tonight. First of all, I didn't see the fire department on the agenda tonight, and the meeting's October 16th. I don't understand. A City Council's given directive, and I don't see it on the agenda. So there goes, one more time, City Hall running the agenda and not the council. I'd like to talk about some, just, things I've witnessed in the city and move forward. I know that city, city staff doesn't follow 92313, and there's a mixed review of that, but over the last two weeks, there's been several comments about Mr. TV Video and its upkeep. Actually, it was a whole tread. We need to get something on that corner. I would like City Council to direct Mr. Duffy to, he's this great redevelopment master, and so is Kent Henderson supposedly, to get something put in on that corner. Who wants to look at that every time we drive by? I'm willing to help work. I know Councilmember Hussey got what he's in. Thank you, Mr. Hussey. Now, I'm, I don't know if I'm going to get skinny or get fatter, but good food. And I know Mr. Hussey can do stuff like that, and maybe we can get together, because I found another type of business that might be a good fit for us. GT Pet Stop, are they an automotive place to work on your car or a used car lot? They have more cars on that corner than most used car lots do, and I'm sick of looking at it. Ms. Molina, can we please do something with GT Pet Stop? Do something to them, do something at them, find them, whatever we legally can do, we need to get rid of that ISO, or I'm tired of looking at it. I think many citizens are. Lastly, I'm coordinating the cities. I might be the one responsible for this. Please don't come and egg my house. If you have a dead lawn, a dirt lawn, an unimproved lawn that doesn't have drought-resistant or grass, I'm going to write down your address, and I'm going to turn you into code enforcement because your lawn is not in harmony with the rest of the community, as the code states. I would like the City Council to work with Ms. Molina, and her staff may be drafting a new policy that your lawn must be an improved surface, drought-resistant, artificial turf, or watered green grass, because I'm tired of looking at all of this dead lawn, no lawn, dirt lawn. If you drive up and down Mount Vernon, from the top of the hill to Barton Road, you'll count about 10 lawns just coming in on Mount Vernon. I keep my lawn up. It looks like Disneyland. It's mowed on a diagonal. I water my lawn. It doesn't cost that much money. I wish I had drought-resistant lawn, but my wife likes green grass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. All right, we'll close public comment at this time and bring it back to the City Council for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Kent Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a brief comment regarding the fire district meeting, the Board of Supervisors next Tuesday. The City Council addressed this item in its last meeting and unanimously adopted a resolution opposing the imposition of the parcel tax by the Fire District and the Board of Supervisors acting as the Fire District Board. It's important that all of you know about that meeting. It's at, the board meeting begins at 10:00 a.m., so it's not easy or convenient to, for citizens who work here in town or outside of town to attend, but those of you who can attend and can testify on behalf of the city, opposing the fire district tax, I think it would be a good thing, not only for the board members to hear, but for council members to evaluate the options for fire services that are going to be coming before us at some time in the, in the near future. My only other comment involves, all of you know that we're in the political season, and I happen to be carrying one of my political signs, and I got stopped by a four-year-old and asked about the sign, and I told him what it was all about, and I kept on going my way. So the next time I saw him, he said he wanted to talk to me, and he had some friends who wanted to talk to me. He had a message for the mayor and the council, and that message essentially was, "We need better places to eat. We need better places to play. We need kids facilities." It was, it was an interesting conversation with about five or six like-minded, four- and five-year-olds. I don't know where they came from and how they got together, but it was just a tremendous experience for me, and I promised them that I would pass on the message to the City Council and to city staff. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
First of all, thank you for everybody coming out tonight, and it was an honor to know Mickey. He's a great guy, and, you know, I remember coaching his grandkids out there and stuff, like, who's this guy? I hope I don't, you know, make him upset, but, and then if I wanted something, a different call, I would just send him over to talk to the umpire, but no. Great guy, we had good memories together, and a great family, so my blessings to you and prayers for your family. Other thing, I just want to say, I was told, well, asked to, let me say, own up to this, but I'm just going to say one thing. When you're on the council, you get called all the time. My phone number's on the card and stuff, and you get calls on complaints, you get calls on everything, all hours of the night, weekends, holiday vacations, but, you know, that's just part of the thing, being a, a public servant, you know, we're not here for the money, but we're here because we love our city. So, I already talked to Mr. McConnell last time we were here, and I'm going to let it public, it was me that called Cynthia Fortune because I had numerous complaints about him up there at the donut shop. So I don't want to get involved with the donut shop or what's going on, you know, Mr. McConnell's freedom of speech and stuff, but we do have ordinance here. And my thing really, reason why I'm saying this, because it's not fair to attack, you know, Cynthia Fortune, which is my directive, to have her go up there. So, I'm manning up to that, saying that I called Cynthia Fortune, because when we get called, and if Mr. McConnell, if you get on the seat, you'll get called, too, to go take care of stuff, just like we had Mr. Rivera just say that he wants to call us about dead lawns and stuff. We have ordinance in this city. I know we have one that's not too popular about the trash cans. I'm sure we start enforcing that, we'll, the city will be, you know, an HOA or something on that, and we have it, because there's people that leave their trash cans out there all week on the, in the road, and that's, it's a hazard. So that's all, I just want to let the record be straight on that, so I have no problem with letting people know or be honest with them. So, but once again, God bless you, Daniel, you know, we'll miss him. I miss talking to him and stuff, and like I said, if you boys need anything, let me know, you know, I have good memories all the time. God bless you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Just very briefly, Mayor, thank you. I agree with Counselor Tetley's comments. Mickey was an extraordinary individual, and I am sure that he is whipping things into shape in heaven at this point. He was, to me, was quite an example. He was a tower of strength, and I was able to substitute for him for a little bit in one of the tasks that he accepted, and it kept me sweating and rolling because all I was doing was moving food from one place to another while I was on the Lions. Danny, if there's anything we can do for you, we're here. And I'd just like to say that we need more people like Mickey. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Pro Tem, Sylvia Robles.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also want to extend my condolences. Mickey had shared about your 28-day Tahiti cruise, and I'm sure that's a wonderful memory, and I said to my husband, wouldn't that be great if we did? And he said he wouldn't go anywhere for 28 days with me on a, on a ship, so. I just wanted to say a few remarks about Jade Maldonado, who is 14 years old. He's my, two of my granddaughter's first cousin on the other side of the family. You know, she come, came from a home that had very limited resources, and her mother had lost a leg to diabetes. At the age of six, she had gone through psychological counseling because they needed a bone marrow donor for one of the siblings, and from the news accounts, they said, "Do you understand what you're doing?" And she says, "Yes, I'm doing everything I can to save my brother's life." She was a straight A student. She had just received awards for that achievement. She had wanted to be a medical doctor. Unfortunately, you know, folks just don't get it around schools. She was in an absolutely bright-colored marked crosswalk, and someone came and took her life and then ran off, and has been captured, you know, about eight days later. And I also pray for that woman, but I just wanted to extend to this, this family and their sorrow, recognize the beauty of the daughter they had, and to send our Grand Terrace condolences to them, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and I am sorry for your family's loss. That was a horrible thing, and then made, made worse by the driver not stopping. Just to give my update on, on a couple things before I pay my respects to Lion Mickey. September 27th, I gave the welcoming remarks for the sixth annual San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Business-to-Business Expo. That was an opportunity for me to do that as the vice president of the organization, but also as the mayor of Grand Terrace. So our city got some recognition in the countywide area. At the SBCTA board meeting on October 3rd, we had a couple of conferences with our attorneys, one with real property negotiators for a southeast corner of Stowe Street and Second Avenue in Upland, and that, we talked about price and terms of payment. We conferred with our legal counseling, council on existing litigation. One case of Big Dane and Beals Texas BBQ LLC versus the City of Rancho Cucamonga, City of Fontana, San Bernardino Council of Governments, and the San Bernardino Superior Court. In an open session, we received some legislative updates and various audit reports, and report on potential impacts of the proposed repeal of Senate Bill 1. That's Proposition 6 on the ballot. The San Bernardino County Transportation Authority has projects that they are projecting funding from that particular, from SB 1, and depending on the state of, of things after November 6th, they have to make their plans for the eventuality that, that Senate Bill 1 is repealed. So they do have plans going forward if it is not repealed, and they have plans going forward if it is. We amended contracts for service on multiple contracts, and we adopted a final study mitigated negative declaration and mitigating monitoring and reporting program for Lilac to Rancho Double Tracking Project, and we appointed Councilmember Ray Marquez from the City of Chino Hills to the State Route 91 Advisory Committee as an ex-official representative, and his term will end in December 31st, 2020. And I just want to say just a few words about Lion Mickey Boobier. To me, he certainly had the heart of a lion. He would do whatever it took to complete his commitments, and he could always be counted on. And yes, he was gruff, and Mr. Tetley, I really liked that description of Mickey because I never thought about it like that, but it's exactly who he was. He was very much a stickler for the rules, but they applied to him as much as he expected them to apply to everybody else, and so this community will, will certainly miss Mickey and, and all that he brought to, all the good that he brought to the community. And with that, I'll end my report. We'll move on to new business. Our first item of new business is reestablishing the Community Emergency Response Team program and transitioning the Emergency Operations Committee to the CERT program. Ms. Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening is a request by staff for the council to adopt a resolution reestablishing the Community Emergency Response Program and disbanding effective January 1st, 2019, the Volunteer Emergency Operations Committee. Just to give a little bit of background, the city did have a CERT program between 2008 and 2013, and 2013 it was disbanded. Around 2015, 2016, the city started assessing their emergency management services and, you know, where we're at with respect to emergency preparedness, and in 2016, we hired a consultant to do an assessment for us, and that was done by IEM, and the gentleman's name was Michael Gregory, and Mr. Gregory recommended that one of the things we should look at is transitioning the Volunteer EOC Committee, Emergency Operations Committee, into a CERT program. And so, after we got that report, that's one of the things that the Volunteer EOC and the staff has been working on for quite some time. So the CERT is a, is a federal program and requires, it's a 20-hour course to be certified as a Community Emergency Response Team member. Some of the topics that is covered in the training is fire safety... Some of the topics that is covered in the training is fire safety, search and rescue, the team organization, and also, um, disaster medical operations. And before I, I go more into the CERT program, um, that we would like the council to reestablish, I did want to recognize that the Volunteer Emergency Operations Committee has been, um, has been meeting for quite some time, for several years, and they've been instrumental in helping us prepare our Emergency Operations Plan and our Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, and also in just reconstituting the CERT program, numerous meetings have been had, uh, they have subcommittee looking at the CERT bylaws and section. Some of the people, uh, you know, Paul Tickner is the chairman, we have Hanny Bennett, we have Connie Parsons, Joe Ramos, he's an alternate, and then I also just want to recognize, even though he's passed away early this year, is Vic Venekhausen, this was a really important topic for him. So, the CERT program, we did have some training in March, we have 13 residents trained, and there are eight people interested in becoming part of the formal CERT training. The other members, the thing about the CERT training, it's 20 hours, but you can go through the training and just release back into the community, and that means you're trained to help yourself in the event of a disaster or your neighbors. But if you want to participate more and become formalized into the CERT program, which is what we're proposing, then there's, uh, more training, more community involvement, and then also, in the event of a disaster, the city manager could activate the Emergency Operations, uh, excuse me, the CERT team. So, we have 30 more residents signed up for training, and we're looking at doing that sometime in the fall or early next year. So, once we establish the CERT, they will help us implement our Emergency Operations Plan and our Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I will add that our Volunteer Emergency Operation Committee, um, along with some CERT members, excuse me, some members who have been trained in CERT, have been participating in our monthly meetings, and also attending community events to assist or get some information out regarding CERT. And so, um, one of the things that was really important in reestablishing CERT was to have some bylaws that, um, identify the roles and responsibilities of the CERT members, and it covers things such as the organizational structure, the responsibilities, and ongoing participation requirements. There will be a CERT board made up of the city manager or designee, a CERT coordinator, planning and outreach secretary slash treasurer, a training coordinator, and logistics coordinator, and so this, these members will be voted in by the general membership of the CERT members, and, um, and then they'll sit as a board. So, with that, um, staff's recommendation is that the council adopt this, the attached resolution, uh, reestablishing the CERT program, including the CERT bylaws, and then also, uh, part of that action is to disband the Volunteer EOC, which would be, excuse me, that's a typo, it would be effective January 1st, 2019. Uh, during that time, between now and January 1st, the Volunteer EOC would, um, set up the CERT program. And that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to respond to any comments.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment, do we have any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I move that the City Council adopt a resolution in the City Council, the City of Grand Terrace, State of California, adopting a resolution reestablishing the Community Emergency Response Program and disbanding effective on January 1st, 2019, the Volunteer Emergency Operations Committee.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Henderson and a second by Councilmember Wilson, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Item number 10 is the Assessing Additional Public Safety Services in Grand Terrace Through Community Survey, Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. The staff report before you today supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of expenditure budgets, allocations, and operational costs. Two months ago, City Council requested staff to research the cost of polling, polling residents to identify whether they would desire enhanced police protection services. So, we contacted True North Research regarding the possibility of providing such services. Through public opinion poll and analysis, this would have included online service, surveys, mass mailings, live phone calling, focus groups. So, what they provided us with is, um, they did a research to see if, if they looked at all the registered individuals, who would vote on a possible measure, and on what year it would be provided, so they provided us a table on packet page 2, 216, um, and these are all the registered voters, as verified with the county, and who may and may not come out if such a measure would be put during these years. Now, based on what we asked, uh, depending on the number of questions asked, their estimate was between 20 and 24,000 to conduct such a poll. So, should the city, uh, decide to hire a consultant to do so, um, staff would have to request that 24,000 be appropriated from the general fund, fund balance, to cover this cost. And that concludes my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions the City Council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune, are there questions of staff at this time? Mayor Pro Tem?
I guess I just wonder why we would spend such a amount on one question, you know, I'm thinking that there are other things that we should maybe pull the community on.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, we can certainly, uh, ask additional questions, uh, but the way they've got that fashion, that, that's the complete price for, for that component, but, but certainly, um, what we can do is, if there are other questions you'd like to have formatted along with that, we can, we can certainly do that.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm thinking maybe there could be an ad hoc committee of two members, and they can, um, do a deeper dive on what kind of questions we might ask, and what the cost may be, and come back to us on that.
Mayor Pro Tem, if I might, would the questions be just in general, what do people want to see, or specific to law enforcement?
Um, no, I was thinking, um, like, one of our, our next items, we're talking about RDA money, and maybe some of those, uh, other than infrastructure, maybe some of those questions we might want to ask, if that's a priority for the community, um, and...
So, more of just a priority survey than covering multiple subjects?
Yeah, yeah, I guess that's one way of putting it, but the ad hoc can, I mean, we've been through some discussions, and I think the, the ad hoc committee can, can remember those, and, and we can have input with them, and, and, um, look at, um, obviously, it's we, you know, we're not going to make a big, long survey and triple, and double the price, but you know, maybe we can get at least three, four questions out.
Mayor, if I might?
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, so what we can do, if the council decides to appoint an ad hoc committee, we can go through, say, the last two years of council agenda items, and just have that, have that list there, maybe that'll spark some questions that, to help the committee in terms of landing on certain questions.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, no, I didn't have anything else.
Okay, any further questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hussey?
So, if we spend $24,000 and this survey says that we need additional shares, that people want it, and then it's brought back to the council under recommendations, and we don't approve it, so we just wasted $24,000?
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, um, staff was given direction as a, as a result of our previous discussion to bring, uh, an item back, to, um, try to survey what the community wanted, and so this is our attempt in order to do that, so yes, if...
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. Duffy, I mean...
Councilmember Hussey?
Um, I don't, $24,000, I'm looking at, we could have the share for the HOPE program for another month. My only concern is money going to waste, and the answer that pretty much a lot of us already know, but some people want to still say it's, they don't need it, and, and it'll come back to us, and it'll be a dead subject again, and that's my main concern, I mean, we, personally, we do need the shares, I mean, today I saw him arrested, same guy's been arrested several times, it's a waste of resources for our guys to be out there, and, um, the state ties our guys, men and women's hands on things, and all that person was doing to the community is just being a burden on people and taking away, you know, their quality of life. And I know there was a, some other stuff, and our city has changed, we have drug houses in here, I had kids across the street, well, on my side of the street, smoking dope in their car, doing the hot box, I guess, but, you know, they got to see the correction officer's side of me, so they'll never come back around, but, um, my main concern, Mr. Duffy, is just the 24,000, and what, if we're going to spend it, what can it go for, and is this council going to agree on that? So, that was my, just question for you that you answered, and I like the ad hoc thing, saying that the citizens come anyway on it, so we don't spend the money, because I'd rather have the money spent, this 24,000 towards the sheriff or for other things, so that's just my question.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, it came to me, Mayor, when we had talked about that we want data, you know, and, and part of the thing that you express, and I agree with, is maybe, you know, um, one of the questions would be, in the horizon out, we expect to be stronger financially, and one of the questions would be, you know, we expect my 2021, blah, 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 so would you be interested in, in some kind of gap measure now, that expires by then or not? That might be one of, you know, the, the issues. And then, you know, speaking out loud about that, I, you know, I have to depend on the consultants, but maybe they wouldn't want to muddle, you know, the survey with too many things and confuse people too, but I think it is important, because folks can't always come into this forum, so we really don't know, other than the, the few people that, that, that attend here, so it's a good way of, of getting, um, a broad section of, of folks that's a valid survey to, to respond on an important issue and give some good advice to the council.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, any further questions at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, City Manager, questions for you. Is this, I, I, I guess I'm confused about what we're really asking here for. Is this a device to determine the likelihood that people will actually vote for a tax measure, in other words, will they tax themselves? Or is this something that's supposed to ask whether they recognize that they need additional police if somebody will give it to them, because seems to me we've already answered that question. If we can find the money, then, uh, they'll take it.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, and we will have Ms. Fortune chime in in this, but, but based on my experience in this particular area, what they would be asking is, is would the voter be most likely to support, uh, the, the financial support to have an additional, additional officer? So, do you have anything to add to that, Ms. Fortune?
No, sir, what you said is correct.
Okay, so then, just to clarify, we're asking if we would tax ourselves?
Yes.
God, thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, seeing none, I'll open it to public comment. Our first speaker is Jeremy Rivera.
So, to give you a little background, and for the audience and the people watching at home, I started becoming heavily involved in May, coming to council meeting, went to all the budget meetings in the park, and we start talking about money. And I look at the monthly report that Ms. Fortuna puts out, and sometimes I'm questioning what we're spending, and the first thing I started looking at was staff salaries, and then I started looking at all the assistants, and then City Council approved an assistant for Mr. Duffy, City Manager, because he needs an assistant so he can get bigger and better things done, is what I was told. So, we hired some young whipper snapper that was all techie, that could run a Facebook, a Twitter, an Instagram, a Snapchat, and everything else, at $65,000 per year, and I heard it was 90 at one point, but we lowered his salary down, because that's kind of high for an executive assistant. Then I started questioning the service fees for the website that hadn't launched. Then I was told we have a $25,000 webpage that high schoolers at Grand Terrace High could probably design and put up for free with some, you know, power from City Hall so they don't post bad things on there, $25,000. Now, we're going to spend $24,000 on a survey that you can do on surveymonkey.com for Does that make any sense to anybody in this room? I think that's ridiculous. Online surveys are some that are free, and we have Mr. Techie that we pay $65,000 a year for. Can't he do a survey online? Cityofgrandterrace.org, get a little reminder or sender in our email, and then we complete the one-question survey. Would you like more in law enforcement? Yes, or no? We know what Mr. Lieutenant Doug Woof wants, I know what I want, and I think I know what most of the citizens of Grand Terrace want, a cop on every corner, a motorcycle cop, so when that little girl crossed the side, crosswalk at school in San Bernardino, there should have been a motorcycle cop there, and God bless her and her family. That was my first teaching gig, and I hold those kids at Pacific Deer in my heart, because I know they're underserved. It's the hardest school, and my heart goes out to you, Ms. Robles, but we gotta stop spending this money like this, this is ridiculous, $24,000? How much does that, oh, well, Mr. Duffy, I'm sorry, that's one month of your salary. How much for the rest of the citizens of Grand Terrace? How much does it, how long does it take to make them $24,000 for their families?
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Our next speaker is Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, Walden Avenue, Grand Terrace. This is just like line item 12, has political undertones and should be postponed until after the election, that's pretty much real simple. We should have some kind of a rule where anything has anything that might be political related to like three months or two months prior to the election should just be put off the agenda until, unless it's super important, until afterwards, because this is just causing troubles, constant troubles, constant troubles, constant problems, shouldn't have it. But when you do have it, I agree with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, why only one question? I've been on many ad hoc committees, and, um, I think if you want to ask we, the people, what we, the people want, we should have the, we, the people should run the survey. I don't want to have any staff there serving any more Kool-Aid, like I've experienced a couple times. There's such things with new technology, not just Monkey Survey, but there's the V-logs, live video logs, if none of you are familiar with those, or webinars, it can all be done super cheap, super cheap, and we, the people, should be able to run, and I would appreciate all points of view, whether if you want to tax yourselves, or you come up with other ideas of how we can come up and raise money, whatever, I want everybody involved, and the best way to do it, because it's so hard to get to some of these meetings, is use the technologies, webinars, V-logs, Monkey Survey, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. We'll close public comment, bring it back to council for consideration of a motion or further discussion. Oh, thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have difficulty with, uh, with, with this proposal, Mr. Wilson has touched upon some of my concerns. Uh, I think, at least anecdotally, it's not scientific, uh, most Grand Terrace citizens, uh, a large majority, uh, believe we should have enhanced law enforcement. The issue is, how do we pay for it? And that's the $64,000 question, and, um, there isn't a consensus on how we should pay for it. Some folks, as has already been indicated, want to cut staff, City Hall, cut salaries, whatever, and believe that that's the, uh, appropriate approach. Others want to ask the question of you, of all of us, would you be willing to tax yourself for a specific purpose for law enforcement? And would have a certain term and a citizens of, oversight board and things of that nature. So, um, I'm not, I'm not inclined to, uh, to support the request to expend money for this purpose, when I think, um, we won't get to the core issue, and that issue is whether or not, um, we can find a way to provide the enhanced law enforcement that... that we require, uh, as a community. I think, in general, asking people in a survey whether or not they're willing to tax themselves is, is a difficult proposition, no matter how you look at it. If taxes are in, in the discussion, you're always gonna be rowing upstream. It's uphill battle. So typically, um, when they are approved, or when they are at least provided consideration by the council and the community, you have a group of, of community volunteers who go around explaining what the program is about, collecting signatures in a sufficient amount to actually place it on a ballot. That process this past year was short-circuited, but the citizens involved are committed, and they were making pretty good progress. So, um, it's a long-winded way of saying that, um, I think there's a better way to go about this, and I don't know that we need to hire an outside consultant to tell us what most of us feel in our gut already. Now, I'm not saying that that's a scientific approach either, but I haven't talked to too many people in Grand Terrace who believe that one sheriff's deputy is sufficient for, for this community, particularly when we have difficulties dealing with what we call transitional crime. Not people in Grand Terrace that are creating crimes, but the people that are traveling through Grand Terrace that are creating the crime. That's unpredictable, somewhat uncontrollable. And as Mr. Rivera and others have indicated, we have traffic issues, traffic management issues, traffic safety issues, safe route to school issues, all involved in public safety. So at some point, we as a community and we as a council have to face the music and determine what's the best course of action to proceed in order to get where we wanna be. Although I don't think that this particular approach is something that I can support. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. What shall we do with this item? Mayor Protem.
I think we should just not take any action on it.
Okay. That's something. Others?
Yeah, I, I think we just let this one go, and we, we find other ways to do the survey. I mean, talking to the public, you know, people were asking why we didn't go ahead and let it vote, because some still want, and then other ones were concerned about the fire department. You know, we need to let all this election, everything, go to the wayside, and we need to take care of our men and women that are out there protecting us. And if we have to find additional resources, something, I mean, I know we gotta lie at the end of the tunnel, and that's what the whole thing for the tax was, was for the lie at the end of the tunnel, just so everybody pitching a little bit. Me, I didn't care about, you know, $87. I want our men and women protected. I want our city protected. But a lot of people, it was a hardship, and I understand this state, because we're overtaxed, and the money doesn't go for it. But we did have fail states that Mr. Gallow and Bobby Forbes set up for us as a council to direct it. But right here, to waste $24,000 on a survey, what we already know the answer's probably gonna be, and then it's gonna be up to the voters, I'd rather use that $24,000 towards our share of coverage, so that's all I have.
Councilmember Wilson.
Well, seeing as how the governor was the brilliant one that did the decriminalization, maybe we just oughta ask him for the money. I make a motion, Mayor, that, uh, we, uh, provide direction to staff to not hire a consultant to assess community support. I think we already have our answer in relation to additional public safety services, and also not provide direction to do so, approve the appropiation of the $24,000. From the general fund, fund balance to cover the estimated cost of survey, let's use the money for something better than that.
Councilmember Henderson.
With Mr. Wilson's consideration, I'd like to offer a substitute motion, and that would be just to table this matter, if Mr. Wilson is comfortable with that.
So your motion is to table.
Mr. Adams, is that the appropriate mechanism for this? Is it a table, or is it, is it a dismissal prejudice, or?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the motion that Councilmember Wilson made would pretty much make it very difficult to bring it back, because of the fact, as Councilmember Henderson pointed out with the Rosenberg rules and so on, um, you'd have to have vote to bring it back and so on, uh, and it'd have to come from the majority. And then going to table, tabling it would, uh, would require a vote of the council to bring it back. And, and that's how that one works.
Was, was that what you were intending, was that we vote to bring it back at a, at a later date? Or did you wanna, did you wanna add conditions to your request for having it come back at another time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My intent was to, was to, uh, remove this item or table it and not have it come back. But if, if there's some doubt about that at this point, I would accede to Mr. Wilson's original motion and, and second it as well.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Wilson, and a second by Councilmember Henderson. I appreciate the, the data point on the cost of the survey. Please vote. Motion passes with Councilmembers Hussey and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Mcnevo voting yes, Councilmember Henderson votes no.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I pushed the wrong button. You're supposed to be in support of Mr. Wilson's motion.
Okay, so Councilmember Henderson amends his vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 11. I thought that was a little interesting that you seconded it, but, you know, that happens. All right. Item 11, award from Community Benefits Fund of the Grand Terrace High School Legacy Regiment Boosters for the purchase of band equipment trailer. Ms. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. The staff report supports two goals, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous revenue review of grant applications received, and develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaboration with community youth programs. So the application for a Community Benefits Fund grant before you is applied for by the Grand Terrace High School Legacy Regiment Boosters. Their mission is to provide financial and logistical support for the Grand Terrace High School Marching Band and Color Guard. Their purpose is to promote, support music, and to participate in civic events throughout the community. The amount they're requesting is $2,000. This will augment the purchase of a trailer for their band equipment. And as shown, the current balance that we have today is $16,000. Should City Council approve this, our remaining balance in our community benefit funds for the rest of the year will be $14,000. Representatives from the Legacy Boosters are here. Should City Council have any questions of them? That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hussey.
I have one for the band director, or is there? Yes, sir.
Well, it took you guys so long to fill out this paperwork.
Honestly, just, I get, we get so focused on what we're doing. I know that I had met with you a little over a year ago. It was, uh, I think, May 2017, about it. And then, um, just kinda like, I still had the paper, it was in a file, and then it just took me a while to get around to it. We kept debating back and forth about, um, which path we wanted to take as far as purchasing a trailer. And I know that one of the stipulations you had mentioned was, at the time, if it was May, it would have had to have been acquired before June 30th, the close of the fiscal year, so we didn't wanna do it then. Then last school year was just one of those things, we wanted to wait until we found what we were looking for. Now we have a good idea of which direction we wanna take, and we feel comfortable with being able to, um, to complete our purchase. And this, this amount, if we are awarded it, would, would help us with making that final acquisition.
All right, well, you know, I just personally wanna thank you guys and all your band members and everything for what you do for this community. I mean, every time we have an event, you guys are there, and it's a blessing that, you know, Grand Terrace days and then Christmas tree lighting. I mean, everybody loves what you guys are doing, and, you know, thank you for everything you've done.
Well, thank you, and we love doing it.
That's the only thing I just had. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, to the band director again, sir, I was just wondering, um, how much money has been raised so far?
I don't, what's that? How, how much we have at the moment, do you know? I think we're close to $10,000.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Wilson. Okay. All right, any further questions at this time? I think we're waiting for you to sit down so we can have you stand up again. Thank you for your patience. All right, so I'm gonna open up public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring, uh, close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I wanna move approval of the award of $2,000 from the city's Community Benefits Fund to the Grand Terrace High School Legacy Regiment Boosters to augment current funding for the purchase of a band equipment trailer.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem Robles, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Mcnevo voting yes. All right, thank you. We'll move to updated list of eligible projects that are consistent with city's redevelopment plan, 2011 bond indenture. Mr. City Manager, Harold Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. So this, as the mayor indicated, this is the use of RDA bond proceeds. Uh, tonight's presentation will be a brief history, updating on the brainstorming session which the council undertook on 9/25/2018, of the creation of priority project lists with additional, uh, funding sources necessary. And then, brief history, on September 16, 2016, SB 107 became law. It allowed successor agencies that completed their last and final obligation, or the ROCS, to utilize up to 20% of their bond proceeds. The city submitted a bond expenditure agreement with the successor agency for $1.9 million in bond proceeds. And that was subsequently approved by the Department of Finance for $2.8 million, but we still have some questions about the ability to use the 2.8 as 1.9 is the 20%, as directed by the Department of Finance. And so we are working with our state senator's office to try and get confirmation, uh, from the state agency on our ability to use the entire $2.8 million. Tonight's presentation is a project, projects must be consistent with the redevelopment plan to eliminate blight and create economic development, which is the original purpose of those bond proceeds. A commitment, no contracts will be awarded tonight. Based on council's brainstorming session of 9/25/2018, staff identified priority project list. Some priority projects require additional funding sources. So of the $1.9 million that we have available, because of the projects which the council chose, there are significant projects that are consistent with the redevelopment plan, and they require additional resources. So our priority project list, uh, from the brainstorm session include following categories: public works, infrastructure, planning and land use, and elimination of hazards. And then staff added, uh, some economic development components to, to round off the project, priority project list. So this is actually the list that's actually in the packet. So it was a priority project list, and then there are some additional projects. So tonight, I'm really gonna be focusing on this priority project list here. As you can see, based on this, the, the total cost for the priority project, this is $5.3 million, and we're asking to use 1.9 million in, in terms of the overall bond proceeds. Uh, and the overall goal would be that, once the bond proceeds, um, once these priority projects have been accomplished, if, these are all estimates, if it's, if there is some revenue left over, we would then move down to the other, to the other project list. So in addition to the bond proceeds, some of the other resources that we can utilize would be Prop 68. Uh, and Prop 68 passed in June, and it's known as the drought water, park climate, coastal protection, and outdoor access for all. And what will happen with that particular program, the city will receive, I know the staff report says $200,000 annually, it's actually a one-time allocation of $200,000 based on per capita basis. And then, in addition to that, um, there are multiple grants the city could apply for. And then there's also, other funding sources include Measure, Measure I, and then there's also the development impact fees. So some of these projects, as we move forward, and I have staff, will be presenting the public works director, and also the planning director to assist me in the presentation of the projects. So first up, we have the Mount Vernon Slope Project.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. This first project is, uh, to, uh, secure up the east side of Mount Vernon Avenue, as it travels northbound out of the city, uh, down the hill towards Colton. The project would cut back some of the slope to a two-to-one ratio, which would stabilize it in areas that are available. In some areas, that is impossible, so the use of soil nailing or retaining structures would be required. The project, uh, in conceptual design, we have an estimate of $3.2 million to do the project, and we're requesting, uh, if the council decides to move forward with it, $600,004 from the bond proceeds. Other funding would include, um, it's hazard mitigation grant that we've applied for at this point, and we're waiting to hear back, excuse me, in case our, uh, application is, uh, selected. And as Mr. Duffy said, the other funding sources would be, uh, some DIF and Measure I arterial, arterial funding, as well as, uh, partnering with the city of Colton would be, uh, another source.
So, Mayor and council, here's kind of a view of what the overall, uh, funding sources would be. On Mount Vernon Slope Project, what estimated cost is $3.2 million. A federal grant has been submitted for $2.2 million. There would be a matching component, so we would utilize bond proceeds to help with that match. Prop 68, actually, in your packet page 284, identifies, uh, a, a potential grant opportunity for, to prevent mudslides and, and that particular nature. As Allen also indicated, we also have some, uh, hopefully some matching funds would be from the city of Colton, as, as part of the road intertwines with, into that particular city. Next up, we have the Michigan Sidewalk and Storm Drain Project. Yes, uh, yes.
Councilmember Henderson. Uh, excuse me, Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you. On that, uh, slope, because one of the things, driving up there, and I think Lieutenant Wolf just got on with Grand Terrace, and he sent his guys out there pretty fast, because I observed, uh, a young lady pushing a stroller up there, or two kids, and it was dusk, and it was very, you know, bad situation. I know we're having more, uh, people walking up and down that hill. My thing is on that, you know, we need to take care of the slope, but will there be any room for some kind of sidewalks and then lights? Because that's very dangerous. And if we did do something like that, I know the Assemblymember Ray's office gave the city of, I think, Bloomington, they went ahead and funded projects for, because we used to, we do have students walk up and down a hill for, say, school, um, passage and stuff. So I don't know if we could look into that, or if you thought about having sidewalks beside just shoring up the hill to make it safe for someone's residents. I don't wanna see residents or anybody, I don't wanna see anybody getting hurt, because they will walk up that hill.
So Councilmember Hussey, that once the slope is pulled back, and there's room for sidewalk, one of the things that the city can do, we can add that to our, um, arterial road program through this, to our CPNA, and that would, it would qualify us to be able to add sidewalks and, and lights to that particular area. So we would be using additional Measure I funds and, uh, and any other, um, gas tax resources to be able to add that?
Yeah, I understand. I'm just wondering if we could tap into another resource and to get that, you know, make sure everything's done right the first time, and then, you know, streetlights, because that road does get dark.
Yes.
And we did have a couple fatalities on that, that road, too. So that was just my concern. I like, I'm the type of person, take care of one slope soup, and, you know, be done with it. But I'm worried about people walking up and down there, too, besides the landslide.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Michigan Sidewalk and Storm Drain Project?
Okay, yes, uh, this, this project, uh, would focus on Michigan Avenue, uh, and, uh, part of the project would be to connect, um, oh, the sidewalks. If we go one more. Nope, sorry. Anyhow, excuse me, the, the part of this project would connect the sidewalk segments that are on Michigan right now, in the existing stage, to make it a continuous sidewalk from, uh, Future Commerce Way all the way down to Main Street. Future Commerce Way all the way down to Main Street. Part of that project, as part of that project, we would apply for Safe Route to School grant funding, as well as, again, Prop 68 does have some funding in there for the storm drain, which is the second part of this project. The storm drain segment that the city would be focusing on would be from Van Buren segment here, about halfway down south towards Pico. This segment here would be part of this project. The segment to the west of Michigan is included in the Lewis Pacific Plan project. So they would be constructing this segment of the storm drain. So the city's segment would connect into that. And then, this southerly segment is going to be part of this development on Pico in Michigan. That's in the works at this time. So the flows in Pico would be collected in that system and conveyed to Van Buren, which would then convey all the flow to the west. So the city's segment is about a 700-foot segment from Van Buren halfway to Pico. Those two, those two tasks, if you will, the sidewalk connection and the storm drain segment, would be part of this project, which we would utilize some bond proceeds to fund that, as well as some DIF money and some Prop 68 money as well. As you can see here, we're anticipating about $200,000 from the Prop 68, $500,000 from DIF, Safe Route to School about $100,000, and then, bond proceeds is the $300,000 that's on the list. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Director French, the sidewalk component of this project, would it occur in the existing right-of-way, or would the city have to acquire private property to extend the sidewalks to connecting points?
Yes, Councilman Henderson, there are a few segments that right-of-way would be required to be obtained. Some of them, it's not the whole way, but some segments do require additional right-of-way.
Can you offer an assessment, or is it too early for that, to determine whether or not we would have property owner cooperation with respect to dedications to the city, or would there be adversarial issues to work through?
Right now, it is too early to tell. The city would always move forward with acquiring via dedication is our first choice. But if it doesn't work out, then the last resort would be, you know, taking the property for fair market value.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, so Councilman Henderson, as you're probably aware, on Michigan, there are, there's the east side, and then there's the west side. On the, on the, on the east side of the street, there are some gaps in the, in the sidewalk, but on the, on the west side, there's many more gaps. So the issue of getting cooperation from property owners on the, on the west side requires very little, there's not that many gaps in the sidewalk. But on the, on the east side, there's a significant, there's a significant amount of gaps that we'd have to, we'd have to go through. So, but because of the development that's happening from Pico on to, from Pico midway to down Michigan, the development of that property will, will create a significant amount of sidewalk space for us. Then, from the Habitat for Humanity, there's one gap in between, between Habitat and the new development, so we'd have to provide that, that gap. Then after that, we have probably some challenges with one or two property owners from that point. But the overall goal is, and there's another project after this that Ms. Malina will talk about, is the actual, the design of what Michigan would look like in terms of sidewalk and either bio swells, or however we look at that, the complete master plan of that walkable community. So there will be some issues that we'll have to further develop as we move forward in the project.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I only bring this up, I think the project is a laudable one, and something that we should pursue, but from experience, the timeline in implementing it can be delayed fairly significantly by negotiations between the city and private property owners for the proper dedication or acquisition of the property for sidewalk extension. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Mr. Duffy?
Yes. And the next project is, Ms. Malina will be up for Michigan Walkable Street Plan.
Yes, good evening, thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mayor, members of city council. So we talked a little bit about this project last time. Our thoughts is that with the Gateway Specific Plan and the project to extend commerce all the way down to Main Street will then be utilized to funnel the majority of traffic, and truck traffic onto that Commerce Street Extension and relieve Michigan Street of traffic volumes. And so, with that, we would propose to use bond proceeds, and I wanted to clarify that, unfortunately, this was not updated, but I'll update that out in the next slide. But what we would want to do is hire a consultant to look at Michigan Street and do a complete walkable street plan, look at street trees, look at landscaping, lighting, bikeways, crosswalks, potentially road narrowing now that traffic volumes are being reduced, potentially also street furniture. And so, what we would do is hire a consultant to look at that. They would look at traffic volumes, they would look at right-of-way that's in place. We would also want to incorporate some storm drainage retention, and so they would look at our storm drain plans and our drainage studies for that area. And so, that would take planning and engineering analysis. And so, what we anticipate is to do a complete plan, concept plan. It would be approximately $75,000 that we would be asking for in bond proceeds. But what we would get with this is a, is a concept plan that we can then utilize and leverage that into applying for grant applications. And so, we'll have a concept ready to go, we can apply for either future ATP, Active Transportation Program Fund. Prop 68 also has some funds for stormwater retention. There's all kinds of other funds we can look at, maybe some urban greening type of funds to look at street tree planting. But that's, that's the concept that we would want to move forward with this particular project. But again, I wanted to clarify that, on the lower right-hand corner, that's not the, that was just an estimate we had anticipated were thrown in last time, but after I spoke to some consultants, I understand that the cost would be more along the lines of $95,000.
And so, Mayor, I did just want to reiterate what Ms. Malina said, is basically, you're going to end up with a plan, that's a shovel-ready project at the, at the end of the, at the end of the plan. And then, that's going to allow us to be able to be very competitive for those grants that are out there. And because of the particular location of Michigan, it is a route to school, it is a bus route, it is, it has all those things. And the other thing that's very important for the city in terms of Michigan Street. So right now, all the water in Grand Terrace runs down to Michigan Street. The overall goal here, as even when, as we deal with the Lewis Project, the goal is to de-water Michigan. So the, our goal is to capture all the water, and so it doesn't run on top of Michigan anymore. The Lewis Project has been, has been designed to upsize their pipes to capture the water running down. Our goal is to take any development along Michigan and have it all funnel into a new storm drain to capture all of the water. So Michigan, this is a part of our overall, overall goal, is to de-water Michigan and address the issue of stormwater runoff in Grand Terrace. This really is, would be the comprehensive solution to the stormwater issue in Grand Terrace.
Councilmember Hesse.
Mr. Duffy, on that capture of stormwater, do we get with the water company, see if they have any ideas of that? You know, maybe they could go partners with those or something? You know, because I don't know the charge their, their water table, I mean, bring them in the picture of this?
Yeah, absolutely. And as a part of the Lewis Project, we have another water partner that we're dealing with, is Riverside Public Utilities. And so, what happens to them is that all this water actually contaminates their drinking water component. So they're, they're at the table with us, having the conversations, saying, you know, if you stop this from flowing down and put it in the proper channel, it will save us money in terms of having to treat the water. So that's why we have them at the table with us, talking about what, what are you going to contribute as a part of this overall process? So we are looking at this from a comprehensive standpoint.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes, sir. And also, Mayor, the next item is the purchase of Hudson Successor Agency property. This is the property that abuts the city's property, that the city owns this section here, and this is the acreage here. And so, the overall goal of the city would be to, for the, to use redevelopment bond proceeds to be able to acquire the property, then come back with a land use plan to develop the front of the property for commercial use, and the back for commercial hotel pad or big box of some type of facility back here in the back, or office space. And then, and this will be the total use of those bond proceeds, 650 would be for the entire project to acquire that property. The next item would be the Barton Road Business Sign Program, and what, this would be is to be able to provide a, a grant program to partner with businesses on Barton Road, and also on Michigan and the Van Buren complex, to be able to provide them with an opportunity to apply for this grant program. If they can demonstrate that by increased signage, they're going to be able to generate additional sales tax revenue to, to offset the costs for the grant. They would have over a five-year period to pay that back with increased sales tax. If not, they would be required to pay it back if they didn't reach the overall goals. And that's a $100,000 component. And the concept that would be, you wouldn't provide one group with that, you would provide 50%, though the maximum of $50,000 for, for a business that would want to, needed to do an increased sign, or a new business, or a business that wants to expand their existing facility. Next, we have the Barton Mount Vernon Tree Landscape and Lighting Plan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Duffy. So this particular project, we would look at Barton Road and Mount Vernon, and what we propose to do here is to, for Barton Road, build on the theme that's being started with the interchange project with regard to the streetlights. Those are along, across the bridge, some decorative streetlights, and so, we would look at hiring a consultant to create the theme along Barton Road. We would be looking at street trees, so you want to create a larger, taller street tree theme, then also the incorporation of some accent trees, some smaller trees, then also the actual landscape planters, and then also, there's a potential for some, excuse me, some street furniture, we can look at that also. But what we would do is carry that theme, bring it all along Barton Road going eastward. And then, for Mount Vernon, we would also look at street tree planting and themes, and along, along Mount Vernon in particular, there's a lot of plantar area that can use some, either some refurbishing or some new street trees along that, but we would also look at a thematic theme. So to hire a consultant to do that, we are earmarking about $50,000 of bond proceeds to, to that particular project.
Director Malina?
Yes.
Would that concept work to calm traffic on Barton Road and Mount Vernon?
No, they're, they're more of aesthetic decorative enhancements for those corridors, but, but it wouldn't look at any type of travel lane narrowing or corner intersection bull belts or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
And then, the next item is the Economic Development Incentive for Woody's Classic Grill. And actually, the council already completed this particular task, and it was $50,000 for, $50,000 in bond proceeds for the cost of the project. And what that is, that's an economic incentive loan the city provided to Woody's, they have a five-year program to pay us back based on sales tax generations. If they reach certain marks in terms of employing at least 20 individuals full-time, and also generating a certain dollar amount, they would be, some of the, a portion of that loan would be forgiven. I can say at this point in time, my understanding is that they currently have 60 employees that they have employed. This is also another item which the council had already approved, this is the purchase of automated license plate reader cameras, this is ALPRs. And these are a little bit different from the cameras that we, the, the street video cameras with the blue lights. These are actually a program with, with the Sheriff's Department where they are, they are very active in terms of, they read all the license plates that go through the city. And if there is a car that has a warrant or stolen, the police department or the Sheriff's Department is located immediately of that action. And we currently have several cameras right now, and believe that these additional ones will be added to help us create a net around the city, so we are automatically notified when there are stolen vehicles or i-issues that occur with, with vehicles that come into the city of Grand Terrace. And that was the $150,000, which we estimated, the actual cost for that is at $142. And with that, I'm going to just jump back very quickly to the council, because we went over those other programs before. So what's, what we have here are a list of priority projects, and because the priority projects basically consume the majority of the funds that we have available, what would happen is, here's that prior, here's that additional, original list that we had down below. None of these programs would move forward with bond proceeds, because the majority of these are longer-term projects that we need to commit the resources to and work through to see, to see them to fruition. So once these programs are completed, then we would come back to the council with trying to fill in some of these programs. I'll give you an example, there's one project here, we talked about e-m charging stations. So since the last time that we met with the council, we thought we had a grant with MSRC for $50,000. We've actually received another 100, I believe, $120,000, $150,000 from another source to be able to, to be able to fully fund additional charging stations. So we are looking at, looking at other revenue, like Prop 68 and, and DIF fees and everything else, to try, and to try and address these issues without bond proceeds. But for, we looked them on the list because we wanted, we didn't want to confuse anyone, but for the purposes of tonight's meeting, all of the proceeds that we've, we're talking about, the 1.9 million dollars, we would be focusing on these priority projects. And so, what we would be doing is, these are the projects which we would be developing to bring back to the council. These are the priority projects based upon the brainstorm that the council indicated, and that's what we, how we would move forward. So approval of the list tonight would give staff clear direction that these priority projects are, are, these projects are to be given priority for the use of bond proceeds. And then, any additional money after these have been accomplished, the staff would then work on that, the additional list of projects. So with that, I'm available for any questions the council may have.
Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah. I'm a little bit concerned about having an open-ended purchase order here. You know, like, if we're just going to tell you priority projects, okay, then that would be the, the priority ones. The other ones would have to come back to us in, in some fashion. And the reason I say that, because I don't see anything in here asking for budget amendments, you know, to, to the general fund, any, you know, appropriation authority, so.
That is correct, Mayor Protem. That, that, all you're doing tonight is you're, you're looking at the list and you're saying, yes, these are the items that you want us to work on. You are not making any budget appropriation with, with, with tonight's actions, and we're only focusing in on the use of bond proceeds.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Mr. Manager, I have a, a real question in relation to the hill reinforcement. I see a lot of shoring there, and I know it's very expensive, so if Allen French would like to get up and have some participation in this. Right now, and I know for our purposes in applying for monies, it's always good to look at the worst-case situation, but has there been any hard alternatives? From what I can tell on the soil in that area, it's not super desirable, it's all a bunch of silt and junk. It's all a bunch of silt and junk that was laid up in that hill somewhere along the line, but it stayed there for, hmm, I don't know, the last 36 years I've been around, mostly. Has there been any consideration to laying back the slope, benching it and then planting it, or something like that, some variation to that, rather than just strict shoring and build a monster wall up there?
Yes, Councilmember Wilson. We did look at that, and again, this is in the con step stage, but at the start of the hill, in northern, southern section of the hill, you can see where there are availability to lay it back into the vacant property. So that would be our first course of action. And then as it gets down, and I think there's a Edison Tower that's nearby that we probably couldn't lay back, but there we would do some type of shoring or soil nailing is pretty common these days, and it's.
So our 3.2 million might be slightly exaggerated for what purpose?
No, I don't know that it's exaggerated because when I was talking to the consultant about it, we anticipated doing, just grading where we could and erosion protection on the two to one. And then the segments that we couldn't, those are where we concentrated on retaining systems. So it's not like the whole way down.
Right.
It's only the certain areas where we couldn't lay the slope back.
And I know we're getting into some technical ability here, but you talked about the Edison Towers there. In their easements, does it give us any proviso that if we need to be able to reinforce that slope to be able to use the road, does that give us an opportunity to charge them for whatever has to happen in relation to that? Because I've seen it on Metropolitan Water District, can't imagine why they would have an exclusive easement that would, you know, let them inflict an impact on there and not, you know, give us some, you know, tit-for-tats, so to speak.
Sure. As far as the easements that I've seen, the documents that I've looked at, they have...
Ingress and egress, correct?
Well, they have more than that.
Oh, do they do?
They do.
Okay, well, I decided to bring it up because, you know, obviously 3.2 million bucks is a big nickel to swallow, and it does change a little bit about what we're doing when we're, you know, looking for revenue sources and so on.
Yes, we.
Okay. And the $600,000 would get us how far today? Design or what? That's a lot of money.
No, it would be more than that, more than just design. Yeah, the design maybe would be 100,000.
Okay.
And then we would use the, for our grant, we do have to come up with a match. I think it's 75, 25. So we would apply the bond proceeds to the grant for our matching fund.
The other thing I wanted to also bring up is that, you know, sometimes, I know we're talking about, and since you're here, we're talking about concept plans. And the number that was thrown around was $75,000 for a concept plan. You know my feeling about concept plans. Wouldn't, and if we were going to compete in an arena so far as trying to get money from other sources, couldn't we spend that $75,000 pretty close for a, at least a halfway engineered plan that would get us in that arena?
Yes, a lot of the concept plans that we discuss are basically 35% engineered plans.
Okay, so topo, 35% engineered rough with a little bit of trees thrown on it. Okay, good, that's good. Okay, thank you.
I have one question with regard to the slope while you're still standing there.
Yes.
The Gage Canal runs through, is that an opportunity for us to partner with them? It seemed to me that they would have a stake in having that hillside not come down.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I agree. We did have preliminary discussions with them. The concern at that time was their underground canal, which comes out of the ground in that certain area and then goes back in. They had indicated to me that that was all abandoned, so they weren't too concerned about that at this point.
Okay.
Their line is in the roadway, though. There is a water line in the road that I'm pretty sure that's.
That they wouldn't want buried with the hillside, correct?
That's a good point, yes. We could continue our discussions with them on that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Duffy.
Yes, so Mayor Protem, I kind of want to go back to your question. If we can go to packet page 233. Can I put it on? I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding. So for example, on the additional projects list that I said that we would, we could, we're going to try to find other resources, there's like the library AC unit, and that's $9,000. So if I'm looking at our annual maintenance budget, and I have $9,000 in there to make that repair, I would, I would do that. I wouldn't come back to the council for, so I just wanted to be clear on items like, items like those. And if that is, I want to ensure that there's a clear understanding, I don't want there to be a misunderstanding if I take care of that. Because it's, I'm saying is, this list was developed originally for the use of bond proceeds.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Any further questions at this time? All right, I'll open it up to public comment. Do we have any requests to speak on this item? Thank you. Mr. Jeremy Rivera.
1.9 million dollars. That's life-changing money for the city that we will never probably see again in the city's lifetime, or our lifetime. I think we need to be very diligent in how we spend the money. I'm very concerned about the Mount Vernon slope because I know we're trying to change the name. I think maybe the Bluff at Grand Terrace sounds pretty cool. I don't think that's going to get done for that kind of money, and I think we need to maybe direct city staff to look and talk to Cal Transit. I grew up in the mountains. I grew up traveling Highway 18 all of my life. I still have a cabin and crest line. That number's not the right number. That number's probably not even in the ballpark. And I always think to myself when I'm traveling down the Bluff at Grand Terrace to go to Colton, if that slope just comes off the hill, one less way to get in my city and cause crime. And just let it be, let nature take its course, and I would be okay with that. All right, enough with that. I would like to see a nice boulevard from the point when you get off the freeway all the way up to Mount Vernon along Barton Road, like Riverside Avenue is in downtown Rialto, like Orange Street is in Redlands from the 10 freeway going up to State Street. I do not want plants along Barton Road. I want a nice boulevard center divider down Barton Road, perhaps drought resistant, so we don't have to mow and water it all the time. I keep hearing about all this water on Michigan. I travel down Michigan every day. I live on Van Buren. If we're waiting for Noah's flood, maybe. I've lived here for 14 years, and my Prius has never hydroplaned anywhere down Michigan, okay? I mean, I don't know where all this water is, or where the lake is, but someone let me know, I'll go buy a wave runner. I do not, I do not, and I don't think the citizens of Grand Terrace, once I say this, they'll start thinking about this, want a hotel in the city of Grand Terrace. Take that off the table. The only thing that hotels lead to, drugs, crime, and prostitution. That's what they lead to. We can have the Sheriff's Department do a study, and I don't want that. So that's 650,000 for that property, let's figure something else out. I know someone else owns it or whatever, but there's got to be a better plan. Let's spend the money in making the city a place where people want to come and do business in our city and open businesses. Let's make it beautiful with that money because we're never going to see it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. All right, we'll close public comment. Mr. Duffy, did you want to speak to the purchase of land? I think that there was some clarification that needed to be made there.
And...
There's no project.
Pardon?
That there's no project on that land.
Right, there is no project on the land. Actually, what's, what we're proposing, so the city owns this area, and the Housing Successor Agency owns this particular area. In order for us to make it a project, we need to consolidate the lots, and we don't have a proposal. I have been given direction from the council to be able to, when I bring this back, to bring forward a land use palette that the council would choose from in terms of how they would like the property to be developed. So the highest and best use would be a decision that the council would make. The request, the action that we're requesting today is put it on the priority list to be able to bring this back to the council for, for, for purchase and also a look at a land use palette that the council would choose.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. All right, so we're back with the council for consideration of a motion or more discussion on the items. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These bonds were issued in 2011. The city has been fighting for the use of the bond proceeds ever since the dissolution of the redevelopment program by the state legislature and the governor. Miss Fortune and Mr. Duffy have worked hard, along with council members, working hard to go through the Department of Finance obstacle course in getting to this point, including the approval of our last and final recognized obligation payment schedule. I say all that because I think we should put these funds to use, and the sooner that we can do that, the better. I'm not really sure why there should be concerns about the use of the funds when they are in fact being used or proposed to be used for projects that comply with the redevelopment covenants. So to summarize, we've been after the funds since 2011. We now have a certain portion of the funds. We may even have an additional 800 to 900,000 depending on the State Department of Finance and the State Controller's Office determination. So these are, I think, very good projects in general for the city. They have a significant impact on the community, and they place us on, I think, a good path for accomplishing certain objectives that are outlined in our 2030 vision. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Mayor Protem.
I'm happy with the priority list because I think we should stick to as much as we can to infrastructure issues. I guess, I'm just, being a 40-year resident, a little bit disappointed that, because redevelopment took all the growth in your property tax revenue and turned it into redevelopment that, and that was supposed to get rid of blight and all these things, and that Michigan is still going to be a concept, you know? I'm a little bit disappointed that we just couldn't give them their sidewalks. But I think this is a good beginning. I'm glad that the additional projects have been taken out. I mean, it's kind of like when you're a young married couple and you get that tax return, you know, you spend it 10 times over and, like people say, you know, 10,000 here, 9,000 here, it ends up being real money. So I'm satisfied with this.
Councilmember Hussey.
Yeah, I'm satisfied, but I'd like to see a little adjustment on here. So the Barton Road Business Sign Program, which is good, I too would like to see, you know, part of the Grand Terrace Barton Road enhancement to coordinate with the Business Sign Program. So everything would look nice when they go down there. Just, you know, I know the signs capture tax revenue, but I too like to see, you know, like our, when you get off the freeway and you drive down Barton Road, it'd be a nice place to drive down, and it'd be a good place for our businesses because people like coming over and they like seeing green, and they like seeing a nice road, and they want to stay and spend money here. They just feel safer instead of being all commercial. So I like to, you know, make a little adjustment to that Barton sign to, what is it, 15 or 20,000 project costs, and make that 80, then still do the Barton Road enhancement. That's the only thing I suggest.
My understanding.
Councilmember Hussey, the Barton Road Business Sign Program I'm seeing is $100,000? Is that, is that the one you're looking at? On packet page 233?
Yeah, 233, because you have, it's for 100,000.
Okay, and so you were looking at the...
Yeah, I would like to.
Down here, the 15,000?
Is it, yeah, 15,000, I'm sorry, to, for the enhancement.
Okay, so you were saying, can we, can you do the 80,000 for the business?
Correct. Can you lower the cost on the signage and put, you know, the Barton Road enhancement up there?
So Councilmember, Mayor, if I might add, and we need to clarify that, Ms. Malina, because what he's referencing is actually going to be addressed in the priority projects under Barton Mount Vernon Tree Landscaping and Lighting Plan. So that's, so.
That's this one?
Based on our conversation, we went from the original plan for Barton Road enhancement up to the Barton Mount Vernon Tree Landscaping and Lighting Plan, so.
Okay, so the $50,000 up here Barton Mount Vernon Tree Lighting and Landscaping Plan.
Has been.
Councilmember Hussey, it's on the screen behind you.
Yeah, so it's actually in the Barton Mount Vernon Tree Landscaping and Lighting Plan. So that number has been moved up to $50,000 based on Ms. Malina's consultation with a consultant. So what you're asking for is actually in this, in this particular item in the priority list.
Why is it in two different locations?
That's the original list, and we missed, we changed the name, we omitted, we forgot to omit that.
Sorry. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
So am I incorrect that we were talking about the Economic Development Incentive, the 50 grand? That, see, I thought we already spent that.
You did, sir.
Okay, all right. So that's not a priority project.
That came out of the bond proceeds, though.
Already done, okay. All right, so the only thing I'm a little concerned about here is, is the strict interpretation or definition of the RDA is to wipe out urban blight, and I don't see us wiping out a lot of urban blight here. It seems to me that we have some projects within the city that we could do some partnerships with some people that are property owners to try to redevelop some of the, some of the town. And, you know, barring that redevelopment, putting lipstick on a pig isn't exactly what they were looking to do. Sidewalks and storm drains are important, and cleaning up maybe some of our main thoroughfares, I think are important, but I don't think it's the pure interpretation of what they're, that they were talking about in relation to wiping out urban blight, and I don't want to get in trouble again. So I'm thinking I need, I can need a little more time.
Mr. Duffy.
A little bit more study.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Duffy?
So.
He had it coming for you.
So one of the things that happened when we were putting together this priority list, we sat down with the city attorney's office, and we got an interpretation that all of these projects are consistent with the redevelopment bond, the redevelopment plan and the bond covenant.
A written interpretation from Department of Finance?
Yes, I believe, no, I'm sorry.
No.
We have a written interpretation from our city attorney regarding the use of the bond proceeds.
Is there something that the Department of Finance would give us to, to have us look at these projects and say, yes, these fit within the description of what they should be used for?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, no, we would not. Department of Finance's realm, so to speak, is to authorize us to be able to use the funds. How we use them has to be in relation to the bond covenants, as Councilmember Anderson said. It is not for them to check on to make sure that we do that.
Yeah, so Mayor, every time that we've used the bond proceeds in the past, we pass, there's a resolution that's attached to it regarding the appropriate use of bond funds. So if these particular projects are something that the council wanted to do, before they came back to the council, we can certainly have that resolution attached and that they are, that it is consistent with the use of the bond proceeds. So you can certainly, we can certainly have our city attorney review each particular item and ensure that they are consistent with the bond proceeds whenever you bring an item back to the council for approval.
Councilmember Wilson.
So that's a unilateral, a unilateral approval, which scares the death out of me because it's not, it's not two-party. You know, if we do a finding that our attorney feels like it's okay, then that doesn't mean the other party who can stab us has agreed with it. And that's what I get. And that's what I get scared about, see. And here's my thought pattern. In our, in our city, we're going to have some areas that the only way we're going to improve those areas is to get involved in redevelopment. I can think of one that's been sitting there now like a dead duck for a long time called the, you know, the Stater Brothers, the old Stater Brothers Market. And I understand there is some activity in relation to that. But, you know, we go through our, we cull through our development reporting, you know, month after month, month after month, and what we see is a lot of, yep, they're getting there, no, they're not getting there, yeah, they're getting there, no, they're not getting there. And for my thought, money talks, and, you know, other stuff walks. So I think we would be better served rather than, I mean, granted, sidewalks and storm drains on Michigan are important, but I also agree with the testimony that was had earlier, and I haven't seen a whole lot of lake out there. I think we have to strict, stay to the strict interpretation, or we're going to be behind the wheel in this community. You know, I think we really need to start delving into the world of redevelopment. We're just barely making the rest of our infill, but we're going to have to modernize. I mean, along with the fact that, you know, things have changed drastically in the market, you know, and the idea of, you know, a small crafty type business is just no longer, you know, feasible. And so we have to respond to that market in ways that we haven't even imagined yet. But, you know, rather than get off the beaten path, I just think it's important for us to take a strict look at this redevelopment stuff and not schmear it around a little bit, you know, and butter the landscape. Just my only opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I practice the redevelopment, in the redevelopment field for the vast majority of my career. I can tell you that redevelopment is supposed to eliminate blight, but that's just one of multiple purposes of the redevelopment program. In addition, every project from my review qualifies under the redevelopment covenants and qualifies under the redevelopment program. There is a section in the Health and Safety Code that escapes me at the moment, but the state, the section says something to the effect that the findings and determinations of the local legislative body, meaning the city council, or the city council acting as the governing board of the redevelopment agency, are final and conclusive. That last part is important, are final and conclusive. So it means that if the council determines that a project complies with the redevelopment covenants and complies with the redevelopment plan, that cannot be challenged by outside authorities or outside entities. You have given that authority by the state, and there is no other state agency, Department of Finance or otherwise, that can overrule a city council acting as the governing board of the redevelopment agency for the use of these funds. So these bonds were issued back in 2011. They complied with the redevelopment law. They complied with all of the strictures according to municipal financing, and here we are. We have the bond proceeds. We could use all of the proceeds on Mount Vernon Slope or storm drain issues in one fell swoop, no doubt about that. But I think the list prepared by staff and the research done by the executive department heads is an excellent one and something that can show significant positive impact on the community and establish momentum for additional redevelopment projects, as Mr. Wilson has indicated. But when you're talking about the old Stater Brothers site or other sites for redevelopment, it's important that you understand that property owner participation is absolutely critical. And if the property owner doesn't want to participate with the local government or the property owner charges rent above market, it's difficult, if not impossible, to turn that situation around. There is a brand-new smart and final in the city of Colton that could easily have been in Grand Terrace if, in fact, they had been able to reach agreement with the owner, broker of the old Stater Brothers site. It's unfortunate. It could have happened, it didn't happen. So it's important that we recognize that. There are some issues that we can bring to bear in terms of private-public partnerships. But if the private aspect of that partnership is not partnering effectively with the city, we can allocate monies for projects that don't come to fruition over a period of years, and we lose the opportunities that we have available to us right now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protam?
Well, I'm getting a little confused because I thought Councilman Wilson, that you wanted to spend this money on storm drains. So now we have money allocated for storm drains, and you're saying now let's move the goalpost and wait. So I'm not, so maybe, what I think, you know, that six hundred and fifty thousand, we're going to sell that property and that's going to come back. And at some point, we're going to figure out that eight hundred thousand, whether we can spend that or not.
That's correct.
So what I offer, I think this is a good plan. You know, it's true, you know, I mean, I went for a service I didn't even know existed in Grand Terrace, and every service I go to in Grand Terrace, I no longer go to Rethan's to get my hair done or whatever. You know, you walk in there in the summer and the air conditioning's out, and guess what? They didn't realize they signed a contract where they have to pay for the air conditioning. I go to get a massage, and they're not even on the sign out there because there was no room, and their air conditioning's out, and they didn't realize they signed a contract for those things. So we have a difficult landlord-tenant relationship problem in this business community. And, you know, and the public thinks that, the public just, you know, for redevelopment, everybody says to me, what are you going to do about a private property owner's property? Well, nothing, actually, you know? I mean, that's, the private person has to be willing to want to do something. And just, you know, I met the Gardenus CEO, and for example, I know that Gardenus came and looked at that place, and it was too small. And now guess what? To get to second and third and fourth generation market, they're looking for boutique, and that would have probably, might have been, you know, a good, so things change is what, so... But my thinking is, and I also want to be very careful, that staff comes back to us about the six hundred and fifty thousand and the other residual money with some ideas about what we can do with it. But I think I'm pretty comfortable with today's list.
Mayor?
City Manager Duffy?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to just provide the following information in terms of concerns of the use of the bond proceeds. When these bonds were originally issued back in 2011, one of the primary reasons they were issued was for stabilization of the Mount Vernon Slope. The other item is that we spent three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the design of storm drains on Michigan. So all of these items are very much consistent with what Mr. Wilson is referencing. And then the other two components, the economic development, the purchase of the land, and the signs, those are economic development programs, and they are consistent with the redevelopment bond proceeds.
All right. Any consideration of a motion on this item?
May I move approval?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Henderson, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protam Robles voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes, Councilmember Wilson votes no.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for your conversation on that item.
Comfort break.
I was just going to announce that. We will break for seven minutes. And we will continue with item number thirteen, which is the draft Grand Terrace Active Transportation Plan, and it's unfortunate that we didn't have everybody that was here get to hear this, but couldn't be helped. Now, we're a better audience for you at this point. So Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of the council, thank you very much. So this item this evening is to receive a report on the draft Grand Terrace Active Transportation Plan and to provide input to staff. And I say it's the draft report because we are going to, we have made this report available on the city's website, we've done an e-blast, we're asking the community to give us some input on this draft, and then we will be coming back to the council on November thirteenth for adoption of the document. But last year, early last year, the city council entered into a contract with K T U A to prepare our first-ever active transportation plan. This project is being funded through an active transportation program grant, cycle two, that we received in 2016. And so I wanted to have our consultant from K T U A, excuse me, Joe Puntalan, to provide the presentation for this evening. And so with that, I'll have Joe come up.
Thank you, Sandra. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. It's good to see you again. I was here last year presenting the initial report when we first kicked off this project. I'm here to just really talk about where we are on this draft plan. Like Sandra had mentioned, we are, this project is fully Caltrans-funded, and the goal of this really plan is to identify the bicycle and pedestrian deficiencies in the infrastructure within the city of Grand Terrace, then develop recommendations on to make those improvements, primarily safe routes to school, bicycle-ped improvements that connects within the city, outside the city, routes to parks, routes to retail, improving transit, those types of infrastructure changes. As part of this scope of work was a robust outreach program. We conducted two workshops, which I'll go into a lot of this a little bit further, online survey, we had a mapping survey, and we also did some, we also had the schools participate in some walking tours. They're technically in our contract are called walk audits, but when people hear the word audit, they don't want to participate. So we really introduced it as walking tours, and we got good participation at Terrace Hills Middle School and Grand Terrace High School. And then at the end of the day, what really, what came about our conceptual project, three conceptual plans, priority plans, that we ended up applying for Caltrans cycle four funding, which cycle two is what funded this project. And I'll go into those in further detail as well. But overall, it, the, what I'll be presenting is the components of this final draft Active Transportation Plan. So we had to start off somewhere, looking at what the city of Grand Terrace has on the ground in terms of bicycle facilities, looking at shared bike routes, and looking at bike lanes, so bike lanes on Barton, bike lanes on Mount Vernon, and then also looking at what does the pedestrian environment look like? Where are the missing sidewalks? Where are the gaps? Where are the connected sidewalks? Those are the types of analysis that we wanted, data we wanted to collect. Another thing as far as best practices in this active transportation field is modeling. Where is the propensity for walking and biking? Where is, where do you get the most cost benefit when you're installing bike lanes, installing sidewalks, enhancing crossings? Where do you want to put most of your money into the areas within the city? So we developed a model that looked at population densities, employment densities, collision rates, safety, proximity to schools, a lot of data-driven approach to develop this model, which also helped us prioritize the projects that you'll see later on. And a couple of the other best practices in this field is looking at level of comfort. There are various factors. As a cyclist, what makes you comfortable riding on the road? We look at speed limits, we look at number of lanes, we look at collision rates, we look at the existences of bike facilities, and look at how stressful is it, is the street network within the city for your everyday cyclist, primarily children and not necessarily your everyday commuter, but those that you want to encourage riding your bike more. We also did the same thing for pedestrians, looking at where the sidewalk gaps are. Is there a parkway strip between the sidewalk and the roadway? What's the adjacent roadway feel like in terms of speed, number of lanes? Well, how many crossings do you have to go through? So we also did that analysis to really look at, highlight some of the areas of need within the city. And of course, looking at collision, bicycle and pedestrian collisions through a five-year span as one of our requirements. Looking at, so we conducted all that analysis, and then we presented it to the public on our first workshop, which we held as Community Day last year in 2017. We had great participation, we did bike helmet giveaways, a lot of kids coming up and asking for bikes, bike helmets, and participating in the raffle, which was great. We got a lot of input, particularly from the high school students, as far as where they walking to, to Grand Terrace High School and Terrace Hills Elementary, I'm sorry, Terrace Hills Middle School, because, you know, the event was held right there. We ended up just giving some bike helmets away to some of the children there, just because they were having a good time in our booth. We then came back with the recommendations that you'll see later on, and we came back this year as Community Day and presented those recommendations, the analysis, and then the concept drawings for the priority projects to get final feedback as our last work, public input workshop. Between that time, as I was talking about, the safe routes to school tours that we had done, we had a good participation at Grand Terrace High School and Terrace Hills Middle School, and then we attended parent safety meetings and PTA meetings for the elementary schools, because Grand Terrace Elementary had already conducted a similar program a couple of years ago, so we used that data, and then we just spoke with their teachers and the parents at some of those other events. And then they gave us good feedback as far as what they would like to see improved within our walking to their schools, which helps strengthening the grant applications and procurement for other funds to really get infrastructure built. So just a quick snapshot of the city's commuter mode splits, ninety-five percent of the city drives to work. We wanted to kind of get a feel for the demographics of the city, what their trends are as far as how much they walk, how much they bike in terms of working, and what, who are we working with in order to make these improvements for? And summarizing the, all the surveys that we had collected, we, I think, collected close to two hundred to three hundred surveys somewhere around there, online and hard copy surveys from all our outreach events, schools and parks were by far the number-one destination that we were receiving as far as making connections for walking and biking, far more than many other cities that we work with as far as being up in the seventy-one and about seventy percent for both schools and parks. And then asking that question, what would make walking better overall in the city of Grand Terrace? Just a connected sidewalk network is really what people were looking for in street lighting, and those are things that were mentioned earlier in other presentations. And bicycling in Grand Terrace, again, bike lanes on the street, connecting to bike facilities throughout the city as well. Oh, actually, the others, the second one is actually bike paths, bike paths separated from the street, which then alludes to some of the projects that I'll talk about a little bit later on. So as we got all the information, we did the analysis, we worked with the city, we worked with the public as far as how, now how do we create that network with the city as far as, in terms of bicycle facilities? Here you see is kind of the priority projects. We came up, I think it was, I believe it was eighteen projects connecting throughout the city, for example, Michigan, Gage Canal, Barton, Mount Vernon, and some of the neighborhood streets to really get that east-west connection and some of that north-south connection as well, and making sure that the routes connect to schools and parks and retail. And in terms of safe routes to school, we, using best practices, looking at a quarter-mile away from the school, so we use the road network to develop a, what we call the term walk sheds around each school to really capture where the missing sidewalks are, to really get that, what they call first and last mile connections, connectivity to school. We presented these to the schools, and they were letting us know, you know, I would like to see a sidewalk there, there's a curb ramp here, my son can't roll his trumpet, he can't roll his saxophone, or what do you call the tuba? Can't roll his tuba to school, those types of things. So those are the kind of inputs that we were getting that helped us develop some of these projects. Here's a snapshot and example of one of those blown up for Grand Terrace High School, and we also quantified what that looked like, how many missing, how many linear feet of sidewalk is missing that can make that connection to the school, where the curb ramps needed as kids bicycle to school. Some won't ride on the road, they'll ride on the sidewalk, and so they need the curb ramp to get on the sidewalk either to really get that last push into school. And then where are those missing curb ramps also as well to get up onto those, onto the sidewalk or off the sidewalk wherever they may go. So in terms of the priority projects, another scope was to really take three of the projects, develop them into conceptual plans, and apply for grant funding. Fortunately, as we were working through this, the cycle four grant, Caltrans was being issued, and so we timed, the project was timed almost perfectly to have our priority projects ready to go and into conceptual design to apply for this last cycle of grant, which we submitted in July. So the top priority projects, based on all the ranking of the priorities, public input, that sort of thing, became Mount Vernon, West Barton Road, and then the Gage Canal. So I'll briefly go over what some of the concepts we came up with in terms of those projects. Priority project was the Mount Vernon bicycle and pedestrian improvements, it's looking at enhancing the bike lanes that are already there. Lot of the comments we were getting is we want Mount Vernon to be slower, we want it traffic calm on Mount Vernon, and the way to do that was to, we didn't change any lane configurations, we kept the number of lanes... configurations, we kept the number of lanes the same, but we just widened the bike lanes a little bit, added buffered bike lanes, which you see, you know, in many cities now, buffered bike lanes and some green striping to kind of highlight the transitions where bicycles may meet with the vehicles. And then some curb extensions at some of the neighborhood, the connecting neighborhood streets to really shorten the crossing distance for the kids to be able to travel up and down Mount Vernon. And we continued that concept throughout the entire stretch of Mount Vernon. And then for Barton Road, looking at making the boulevard a welcoming boulevard, welcoming a complete street for all modes, because there's transit lines that run on Barton Road. We wanted, there was no bike facilities between the 215 and Mount Vernon, so it's closing that connection with bike, buffered bike lanes, the green striping again, and adding bus base, so buses can turn out and then they can pick up their passengers without impeding traffic going forward and then turning right back out. This is an opportunity to, as part of the future landscape plan, to incorporate some of those street treatments into this concept as well. And what we ended up doing, we knew that Barton Road and Mount Vernon were not going to be very competitive individually, we grouped them together as a northwest, as a north-south and an east-west connection project for the city into this Caltrans application, so we combined both projects into one application. And then finally, the last priority project we did was the Gage Canal Multi-Use Trail. We worked with the Riverside Public Utilities on preferences for trail type they would like to see. We looked at making the Gage Canal a walkable, bikeable connector throughout the city. It's also part of the SBCTA's Non-Motorized Transportation Plan. So, as part of that, it strengthens the city's application for future funding to get this built, hopefully with this last Caltrans application. It could get procured, but it's really looking at gateways to the canal, to the multi-use path, but primarily getting kids to travel north and south to get to the schools, since it really bisects the city and then, you know, a safe way to travel north and south. So, the next steps are, as Sandra mentioned, the draft report is up on the city's website for review. We'll have it there for a couple of weeks. We've done an e-blast already to all those that provided us emails, our stakeholders through all their surveys that we had done. It's all, it's up on the city's website, and then we'll compile all those comments and come back in November for the final adoption. November 13th is what we're shooting for, depending on how many comments we're going to get. And then the plan will go to the CTC for adoption as well, making sure we meet all the 17 requirements that are required for, as a adopted Active Transportation Plan for the state. What sets the city up is that this Active Transportation Plan now is a checkbox and additional points. When you're going after ATP funding, when you're going after urban green funding, when you're going after other funding sources, this plan will help guide that because you have a plan in place that is guiding future Active Transportation throughout the city. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Punzalan. Are there any questions at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll open public comment. Thank you very much for that report, it was very, very well put together.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeremy Rivera.
I only saw one street that was missing from this whole plan. Did any of you figure it out? Our dearly beloved Michigan. I wonder how Michigan even got its name? How that relates to Grand Terrace. Boy, wouldn't it be nice to have sidewalks on Michigan? I see high schoolers, I see elementary school kids up and down Michigan all day long. I'd love to have something on Michigan. Can Michigan be incorporated in this somehow, some way? It sounds like a bunch of free money. Why are we going to spend our money? I'd like to see if we can squeeze that in there, I don't know if it's too late, but I'd love to get Michigan on board, so we can take people up and down Michigan and have a nice boulevard to walk up and down with our dogs and not get ran over when cars are zipping up and down. So, that's my only thought. Don't forget Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And Director Molina, did you have comments you wanted to make?
Yes, Madam Mayor, only a couple of them. So, Michigan Street is identified in the plan. It's project number four on stamp page 374. And so, we did, we did look at that. The other thing I wanted to let the council know was, when we're looking at the priority projects along Mount Vernon and Barton Road, excuse me, Mount Vernon, you know, the city did have, did get the HISP grant and Public Works Director Alan French is working on that. We did coordinate, we had K T U A look at the HISP grant, look at the improvements that were proposed under that HISP grant, so that we didn't have overlap. So, I just wanted to make that clear, that we did, we did do some coordination on that one.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there any other comments from council? Councilmember Henderson?
I just wanted to compliment the presenter. Excellent presentation, very comprehensive, and obviously, a lot of work has gone into it, and hope for the best with respect to this plan being approved by Caltrans. Thank you, sir.
All right, so this was receive a report, and we, what a report we received. Thank you very much. Is there any need for a motion or a vote on this, Mr. City Attorney?
No, not actually, because you've already done what it recommended.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item 14. And item 14 is a city council, and city council is successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency item. This is an agreement for legal services with Alshire and Winder. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, City Council. The staff report supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of expenditures and ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. The city of Grand Terrace released a request for proposal for legal services back in March 2018. Seven proposals were received. After an extensive review by city council of all the firms' qualifications, three firms were chosen for an oral presentation. City is expecting that the legal service requirements will range from about 50 to 70 hours a month. And based on all the interviews and the firms' qualifications, city council chose Alshire and Winder to provide legal services to the city. The annual legal services total budget of $135,000 is included in the fiscal year 1819 budget. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions City Council or the Successor Agency Board may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I will open public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council and the successor agency for motions. We do need to have two separate votes on this one. So, are there any motions at this time?
I move approval, Madam Mayor.
I'll second the motion. As what, successor agency or city? Which one are we doing first?
We'll start with city.
Okay.
So, we'll have a motion by Councilmember Henderson and a second by Mayor Protam Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protam Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. And then we need a separate motion and vote for the successor agency.
Once again, Chairman, Chairperson, I move approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, Board Member Henderson and Vice Chair Robles, seconded, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Board Members Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Vice Chair Robles voting yes, and Chair McNabb voting yes.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to city council, or City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy.
Just wanted to let the council know that the Southern California Edison completed their conversion of our streetlights from the high sodium lights to LEDs. And they replaced about 400 of the street lamps, and we should be saving anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 a month in reduced energy costs as a result of that. And everyone should be seeing a brighter, wider light on their streets, starting last week. Also, I just wanted to remind the mayor of council and the community about the Family Picnic and Car Show at the Terrace View Elementary School, celebrating the city's fabulous 40th birthday on Saturday, October 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We have a number of community groups that are, will be there, and this should be sort of a review of all the different businesses and community groups that will be participating in the event on Saturday. Most of these groups will have booths, there also, there'd be five restaurants in town that will be also providing food for a small nominal fee, and there's also a birthday cake celebration with cupcakes and cake at 3:00. So, please bring the family out and help us celebrate the city's 40th anniversary. As I said, there'll be fun food and be able to discover some businesses that you might not know that existed in the city of Grand Terrace as part of this process. Also, I wanted to note that on November 3rd, we're having the city's Country Fair, put on by the Historical and Cultural Committee. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. At the Country Fair this year, there's also going to be a farmer's market and also a band throughout the day to increase the activities. In addition to, and that's the street banner that's going, that's going up, started going up today. And then in addition to that, we have the veterans, celebrating the veterans at Veterans Freedom Park on November 11th. So, these street banner poles, and you'll see them right over here, samples of them, will be completely up by Thursday, I believe, all the banners should be up. It's, because of the events are so close, we're having 16 of each on the light poles throughout the city. And with that, Mayor, I think I'm complete, done.
All right. Well, then that leads us to our closed session. We have one item to discuss in closed session tonight, and that's public employee performance evaluations pursuant to government code section 54957B1, title City Manager. And for those of you that were here tonight, thank you for participating and being with us. And I imagine that a number of you will not be here when we come back to adjourn, so I, just a reminder that we will be adjourning tonight's meeting in honor of Michael Mickey Bouvier and Jade Maldonado. It is in their memory that we will close. Please keep them and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Our next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the requests will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So, at this time, we are in recess. We will reconvene to open session. Council met and closed session. One item, public employee performance evaluations pursuant to government code section 54957B1, title City Manager. There are no reportable actions on this item, so at this time, we will adjourn the regular council meeting of the Grand Terrace City Council in memory of resident and community volunteer, Michael Mickey Bouvier and Jade Maldonado, the young woman who was taken far too young. Next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the requests will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.